We'll let everybody get seated. We have a lot of reserved seating that will open up later, so we'll hope to get you all some seats here soon. But welcome. This is the Tuesday, May 2nd, 2015 Town Council Meeting. It is the appointed hour, 6:00 PM. The full council's here and a good number of our citizens, so we certainly appreciate that. The first two things on the agenda tonight are the prayer and the pledge. I would ask Judith Ewing to say the prayer, and Ken, if you will, follow with the pledge.
Yes, ma'am.
Let us pray. Almighty God, I have thee, Father. Send down upon those who hold office in this town of Mount Pleasant the Spirit of wisdom, clarity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And also, dear Lord, be with our first responders. Keep them safe. Spread a hedge of protection around each and every one of us and each and every one of them. Protect us, dear Lord. In your most holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Go face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paglari, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor, we're in compliance.
Thank you very much. The fourth thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and several seconds for approval. Any additions or further discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. We have a public hearing this evening. Mr. Demor, if you would take that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. We do have a public hearing to receive input regarding a proposal to amend the Town and Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances, Chapter 154, Municipal Impact Fees, by removing Section 154.08d8 in its entirety, which will eliminate the provision allowing for a 50 percent reduction in park and recreation fees in certain instances. And Mayor, I do have one person who has signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Martine Arcure.
Ms. Arcure? Are there people in the hall? Could someone ask if Ms. Arcure is in the hall? Martine Arcure? Nope. This public hearing is closed.
Mayor, council members, would you please come forward? We have some awards and presentations.
Is anyone here from the Post and Courier? You are? Thank you. Well, we'll proceed then. We had some exciting news, and I'll turn the microphone over to you. Glenn Smith is here on behalf of the Post and Courier. I hope you all know that we had very, very exciting news here. Our own hometown paper has won a Pulitzer Prize. And I might add that it was amongst some very stiff competition. And it was a great story, so I'm going to turn it over to the representative from the Post and Courier.
Well, thanks so much for inviting us out tonight. Actually, we were supposed to be joined by one other person, but I think she got caught in traffic. But thank you so much for recognizing our work. We worked...
Charleston.
In Charleston. I didn't mean to get things going too early here. Anyway, thank you so much for recognizing our work. It means the world to us.
Can you tell them about this story?
Oh, our story is a five-part series about domestic violence in South Carolina, and we looked at the number of women killed over the past decade in the state, and it was more than 300, which caused us to lead the nation three times within 15 years as the deadliest state in the nation for women. We tried to point out as many things as we could to improve the situation, and since that time, state lawmakers and others have picked up a number of our proposals and are running with them, and we're hopeful some of this stuff gets passed.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Just one quick second. I do want to recognize Jennifer Barry Hawes, who is a contributor to the Pulitzer Prize. She just came in.
I certainly think he needs some recognition. Jennifer was here with us as a municipal reporter for a few, for a short while, but she was also on the story. Would you like to say a few words to address this wonderful crowd? Nothing like putting her on the spot, right?
Well, I'm sorry, I was running a little late. I'm sure Glenn said it all, but I think, you know, we're all very humbled at the newspaper to receive the award, and in particular, just hope that it keeps this issue in the forefront. If you haven't read it, I encourage you to. I'm happy to direct you if you haven't seen it, and really encourage everybody to get involved if you feel compelled to do so, because it's a huge problem and one that I think we can all really make a difference in, and I hope that this award keeps it out there and makes that possible. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry, I was...
And it was on the Charleston side, you were caught in traffic, right?
Guys, come on up.
Mayor Page, council members, I'm delighted to introduce three of four representatives that are going to be here with us tonight, fine gentlemen who represent the Wando Lacrosse team. If ever there was a question as to which high school fielded the best boys lacrosse team in South Carolina, the Wando Warriors left little doubt in answering the question in the Foray State Championship. Wando competed, completed an undefeated season in relatively easy fashion, dispatching of Fort Mill 13 to 6 at Chapin High School to win state championship. The two teams were meeting in the finals for the third consecutive year. Wando won the title in 2013. These boys were part of that then. We lost it to Fort Mill last spring, but we regained that championship last, last time this year, and we have before state champions. Mayor and council members, I might add, we had, from our Wando Lacrosse players, nine players made All-State, three players made All-American, three of our seniors have committed to play NCAA Lacrosse. 2015 record for the season, 18-0, is our record. First undefeated season in the history of the school. Lacrosse was sanctioned by South Carolina High School League in 2010, and since then, Wando has appeared in five championships and have won three of them, including, as we said earlier, 12, 13, and now 15. Let's give a huge shout-out of thanks. Congratulations to these guys. We have before, we have before us here Ham Brower, we have Creighton Shipman, and Brian Cole, and Connor Simson was on his way here tonight, and we appreciate them. These guys are going to run out the door, Mayor, to join the rest of their team, the coaches, and the parents for their banquet tonight. We wanted to have them come over and get appreciated. One final appreciation for Wando. Keep up the great work, guys, and good luck next year.
Madam Mayor, members of council, audience, it seems to be almost a recurring theme for me every time this year about this time. I'm either, seems like now Wando Lacrosse is being recognized, but our cross-country team is being recognized again. This is the 11th cross-country season that we've had here in Mount Pleasant, and this is their 10th year in a row that they have won the state championship.
Come on up.
Folks, y'all come on up. They won the Junior Olympic State Meet in Myrtle Beach, winning the age groups of eight and under for boys and girls, nine and 10 boys, 11 and 12 girls, and 13, 14 girls and boys as a team. We had five individual state champions, Addison Hewitt, Piper Barnhart, Chloe Berta, Mark Richter, and Patrick Spachowski, Spachowski, in 13, 14. We had 99 kids participate in the Junior Olympics in Myrtle Beach, in the Nationals, and Patrick placed 12th as an All-American, and this is the cross-country's team 20th All-American since their inception. As we normally do, we have championships, except this one here gets a little bit crowded.
You better give it to one of the tall ones.
This is one of them. It has the individual competitors and everything that you did with it.
Moms, y'all come on up, get your pictures. Don't be shy. Come on down front.
I will have to replace the fence out of Park West soon, it's getting way down by the cross-country signs that keep going up. And then this is in reference of the state meet that was held in Myrtle Beach in November.
Hello. Hello, Miss Little Savage. How are you? Hey, congratulations. Hi, how are you? Congratulations. Congratulations, guys.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we also have some national champions to recognize One is recreation, the other is eating, and, which is very obvious. I've lost that six-pack many years ago. But the Wando Culinary School, a little background first before I get to the full announcement. Competed in the National Pro Start Invitational, which is the country's premier high school competition focused on restaurant management and the culinary arts. The 14th Annual National Pro Start Invitational was held in Anaheim, California, in April 18 through 2014. Students from across the globe competed in the event. Nearly 1,000 friends, family, and educator and industry leaders were at this and competed, and competition consisted of two areas, management and culinary arts. Last year, Wando finished fifth in the competition. And then after winning the state championship this year in March, and knowing what had waited them, they practiced diligently and perfected their presentation, and it paid off. With their Global Gourmet Food Truck concept, which sounds real good to me, Wando High School clinched first place in the management competition last month, beating out hundreds of students. And these teams are not only from the, from the country, but they were from U.S. territories as well, so they were from all over the place. And the management teams developed a business proposal for an original restaurant concept and presented it to a panel of industry judges. The students were then asked to solve the types of challenges restaurant managers face on a daily basis. Wando High School students, under the guidance of Chef Bill Twaler...
Twaller.
Twaller.
Answered a lot.
I know, I know what you mean. Woad the judges with their Global Gourmet Food Truck concept. Students Anna Ware, Talbert McGee, and Tanner Cornell won the judges over with their plan for a mobile restaurant that features a wide selection of international gourmet sandwiches. Sounds good to me, folks. Congratulations so much on a national level.
I guess while I'm up here, I just want to say thank you to Chef for helping us out and always being there for us, and for leading us here. The Wando Culinary Program has done so much over these past two years, and we plan on doing so much more. Both Talbert and I are graduating this year, and we have Tanner to come back and win next year, so hopefully you'll see him back up here again in a year's time. And yeah, thank you all for recognizing us. We really appreciate it. We put a lot of work into this, and so it's really great that we're being recognized for all of the work that we've done. So, thank you.
I can tell you right now, as a member of the Bridge Run Board, these, this school participates in our Taste of the Bridge Run over here in Mount Pleasant, and they're going to begin some of these other restaurants. To me, that's the best food out there from what these young kids produce. So, we've got some good restaurants on the way into Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, it used to be here. It's a shame that I bring it back here. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen, one final thing. We're here to honor one of our fine officers, Darren Rayly, for his quick action that saved a life. And Darren, would you come forward, please? And also Jacqueline Middleton, Ms. Middleton, you hear, would you come up as well? Darren. Ms. Middleton is the daughter of the gentleman that Officer Rayly provided some quick assistance to. The story goes that, welcome, Jacqueline. April 22nd, coming off the long shift, Darren was on his way home and parked his vehicle and heard some loud noises, some screams from just a few doors down, and without hesitation, he responded immediately and was there when some other bystanders had noticed that Ms. Middleton's father was doing, was getting something out of the back of his trunk in his vehicle, and had lost consciousness, had fallen into the trunk of the vehicle. And he was unresponsive and unconscious. It was a very serious and dire situation. Darren had arrived with the help of another bystander or two, helped to pull the gentleman from the vehicle, and he performed lifesaving techniques on the gentleman, and which undoubtedly helped to save the gentleman's life. And because of his quick action and hesitation, he's being honored this month as our Employee of the Month. Darren. Jacqueline, do you want to say anything?
Because of you, we were able to celebrate my daughter's wedding. My dad passed out just two days before my daughter's wedding. It looked like we were going to have a funeral and a wedding, but my dad got to dance with my daughter.
say yes. Item number six on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 14th, 2015 Town Council Meeting and the April 2015 financial statement. I have a motion and a second. Any addition or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number seven is correspondence and public statements. Mr. Moore, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor. Bob Brimmer.
Please state your name and address for the record, and I'll give you your two minutes.
My name is Bob Brimmer. I reside at 2380 Parsonage Woods Lane, Mount Pleasant. Ladies and gentlemen, I come tonight as a private citizen to speak in opposition to item 11A1, a proposed ordinance to require members of volunteer boards and commissions to resign their seat when filing for an elected office. While it has been stated that no individual is a target of this proposal, I have particular interest in this item, as I am the only person of whom I'm aware that would be forced to lose my planning commission seat when I file for Town Council. That being said, that is not the basis for my opposition tonight, however. My main objection lies in the supporting logic stated during the committee meeting. Some committee members stated that having a public microphone as a sitting commissioner creates an unfair advantage if they're also running for political office. If that's true, how was it any more or less acceptable to allow sitting council members who, who are likely to run for reelection this year to exercise the advantage of incumbency after they file? Council members not only have a microphone to promote their political positions, they also have the advantage of free press. In addition, they also have the ability to raise thousands of dollars in, in campaign funds from the very people who come in front of you to ask for your approval for projects. Many would think that that really is an unfair advantage when it comes to elections. To put forth and pass an ordinance that sets a standard of conduct for your volunteer appointees that you yourselves are specifically exempt from and have benefited from could appear to be problematic for some people. And so I would, I would ask for two things this evening in this regard. One is I'd ask you all to unanimously deny this proposed ordinance change. And two, I would just ask for, for you to reaffirm your trust and appreciation for the dozens of volunteers that served the town selfishly. I think this ordinance, in many ways, sends a message that discourages further public service, so I would appreciate and encourage you to vote no on it.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
William Hamilton.
I'm here to report on the fantastic progress being made by, next slide, in our transit system. I'd like to introduce this young man. The Carta Number 40 bus makes his life possible. He's a prep cook at the Embassy Suites Hotel Downtown. He's working his way through culinary school. He gave me that jar of pineapple jalapeno jelly on the Number 40 bus last week. It was excellent. This is one of the people who our bus system helps every day. He's building a life and a career thanks to the Carta Number 40 bus. And we're building a system, too. The Number Two Express has had a modest increase of 2.36 percent. We need to get to North Mount Pleasant and work on getting more people on that bus. We have wonderful cooperation at Gregory Ferry Landing, where they're getting their tenants on the bus and off our roads. We've got candidates for mayor in Charleston, North Charleston, riding the bus. Next. The Carta Number 40 is our largest bus route. It's showing excellent growth. It's increased, it has increased, it has 1,474 more riders than it did a year ago as of April. That's an increase of 10.54 percent, beating Carta's system average by over 3 percent. We have two wonderful new shelters at Mount Pleasant Town Center that are helping increase it. We do need some, some shelters at 17 and 41 Park West and Boone Hall. Next. That's one of the beautiful shelters in Mount Pleasant Town Center. Next. The Carta Number 41 bus is our little baby brother bus that's trying to make Coleman Boulevard look better. It's much smaller, only runs six days a week. However, it has shown strong growth throughout its young life. It is the teenage, rambunctious teenager of our bus system, and it is up 18.17 percent, more than doubling Carta's system average increase of 7 percent. We need to improve the bus stops up and down Coleman. We need a lot of community outreach. What that means when I say that is I need scout troops and school groups to help me hang things on doorknobs. We need to be going to community meetings, need to be talking to people about how our bus system works, about riding downtown the bus and all the ways that we're using our bus system.
Thank you, ma'am. That's your two minutes.
Oh, well, all right. Thank you.
I feel like I'm turning my system into auctioneers, but you did a great job with your presentation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up on that. Ms. Farrell, under 8A, item number one is a first reading for a piece of property, 2.92 acres, at Weaver Circle and Hungry Neck Boulevard.
You are correct, Madam Mayor. The very first item is actually an annexation. It's for a 2.92 acre piece of property that is located actually on Hungry Neck Boulevard, adjacent to the backside of Lowe's.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the annexation. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15011, an ordinance providing for the annexation of three parcels of land comprising approximately 2.92 acres, located on Weaver Circle and Hungry Neck Boulevard.
And then number two is the zoning on that same piece of property?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning is the next item on the agenda. The zoning that would, has been requested for this piece of property is area-wide business with the application of the Hungry Neck Benning Overlay District on top of this. The main issue that we had discussed previously was the access from this property onto Hungry Neck Boulevard. I do know that engineers for this particular proposed development, which is a senior Alzheimer-type of facility, have worked with Mr. Morrison, and that he is comfortable with the conceptual design. There had also been some discussion regarding the access, that there would be a joint access here with the property owner that is located here, and so those both would be using that. And then I believe, I understand that everything has been satisfied, at least conceptually, and further details would come later when they move into design of this particular project. It was recommended for approval by both the Planning Commission and the Planning Committee.
I have a motion and a second for a first reading. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15012, an ordinance to zone A-B, area-wide business district, HNBVROD, Hungry Neck Boulevard, Benning Road, Overlay District, three parcels of land comprising approximately 2.92 acres, located on Weaver Circle and Hungry Neck Boulevard.
Yes, Mr. Garch.
Madam Mayor, I understand the residents are uncomfortable with access along Weaver Circle, so in support of their concerns, I move that we confirm that it is the wish of Town Council for this project, if we could pull the slide back up, to have access on Hungry Neck Boulevard in response to that concern. Just want to affirm that.
I second that, as long as you would put in there that, as long as it meets, of course, all the engineering aspects, per Brad Morrison.
So, you're admitting your motion?
To include those comments.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, and this also alleviates another landlocked piece of property that wouldn't have to go through that neighborhood. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you. Item number three is a ordinance to amend the Dunes West Plan Development at Cambridge Square.
Madam Mayor, before we consider items three and four, I'd move that we go into executive session and receive legal advice.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. We are at executive session. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, had to have further legal clarification. We are out of executive session. No votes were taken. The items for consideration that we took legal advice on were items three and four. The items for consideration that we took legal advice on were items three and four. Item number three is first reading of an ordinance to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District ordinance pertaining to a portion thereof known as Cambridge Square. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Farrell, for clarification.
Yes, ma'am. There are two items on the agenda this evening, both related to the Cambridge Square development. The first one is item three, as you noted, and that is the zoning request, a request to amend the Dunes West Plan Development ordinance. The second item on the agenda, number four, is the approval of the impact assessment and conceptual plan for Cambridge Square. I would like to note, a request was received from the developer this afternoon requesting deferral until next month for the impact assessment only, item number four. And he did clarify in his response when asked that he did intend or wanted, desired to move forward with his request for the rezoning, the PD amendment. So that is where we will start. They are two separate items on the agenda. The Plan Development Amendment request is to amend the Dunes West Plan Development with respect to the zoning map as well as building height for a portion of the property. So speaking first to the map amendment, I'm going to go to the current map that is in the 1990... Are you operating this or...? Keep going, please. Keep going. It's not moving. There we go. Okay. This is the 1990 Dunes West Plan Development map, and to just orient everyone, the general area in which Cambridge Square is located is right about here. This all is Laurel Hill Plantation, this being Highway 41 and this being Highway 17. So Cambridge Square is generally in that area. What is reflected on that map is that current, what the zoning is shown on this property is, a portion of it is residential townhome, a portion of it is multifamily, and a portion of it is town center, which is a commercial, largely a commercial zoning district within the Dunes West PD. What the applicant has requested is to amend this zoning map, and so, Lauren, if you could move through and I'll show, keep going, please, that one. This is the requested amendment. So what the applicant has requested, there would be no residential townhome as part of this request. This hatch pattern here and here have been requested for town center zoning, and then this portion here, here, and here have all been requested for multifamily. And just to make sure everyone is oriented, this is Park West Boulevard, this is Gray Marsh, this is the swimming pool, this is Foxmore. And so that's what the request is.
Can you show me the third parcel again? You said here, here, and here for...
Okay, the white, anything with the white is what's been requested for the multifamily zoning, and then the hatch pattern right here and here for the town center zoning. So that's the map amendment request that has been submitted. So total of 6.76 acres would be town center and 27.32 would be multifamily. With respect to the height amendment, with respect to the height amendment request, what the applicant has requested is for the TC portions, which would be here and here, that the height be reduced from 50 feet to 45 feet.
Please, while we have a lot of questions and a lot of comments coming up, please hold your heckles. Appreciate it.
The zoning. The zoning, part of the purpose is to provide clarity regarding the property boundaries and zoning districts, as you saw from the 1990 map. That is not clear, so the request would tie it to actual property lines. Beyond that, the question for council to consider is whether or not the requested zoning is appropriate. It is important to note that the requested zoning does support this specific proposed development plan, which is presented in the impact assessment, which is the next item on the agenda. The development plan could not be accomplished without the rezoning. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting. They recommended approval of the height reduction from 50 to 45 feet by a vote of seven to one. They had a tie vote on the consideration of the map amendment to move away from the bubble map, as I refer to it, to this map, was a tie vote, therefore they had no recommendation. Planning Committee reviewed this at their last meeting. They also recommended approval of the height reduction and requested further that the applicant should reduce the building height for all properties still under his control that are Zone TC to 45 feet. This would require an additional public hearing, so it could not be accomplished as part of this process. And then the Planning Committee recommended approval of the map amendment by a vote of two to one. So that covers some very basic information in terms of the zoning request. The impact assessment is the next item on the agenda, and a request for deferral has been submitted for that. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have with the zoning, or if you need for me to, I can review any portion of the impact assessment.
I just have a couple of questions before I open it up to council. Can you review again, how many acres was he requesting for multifamily in this proposal of the impact assessment, which was the next item? But just so I understand it for the zoning.
27.32.
So 27.32 acres, and approximately how many units?
Well, that gets into the impact assessment part of it. He does have a specific proposed development plan where he is showing not only multifamily apartments, but he's also showing some single family and some townhomes. So I think it's important to know, just with that having been said, that the multifamily zoning in Park West, Dunes West allows for all of those residential types, so it's not restricted solely to apartments or condominiums, that single family homes as well as townhomes are also permitted uses. So what is shown on the development plan, the conceptual plan that's associated with the impact assessment, does include all three of those dwelling unit types.
As would be allowed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open it up. Mr. Garch?
Ms. Farrell, looking at this area here based on the 1990 plan, you stated that basically there was no defined zone, correct?
The boundaries.
The boundaries.
Yes, sir.
Other words, floating zones, right? Build this here, build this here. And it's been that way since 1990.
Yes, sir.
So this comes to us, and you've received this from the applicant. Do you know how he arrived at what he wanted for this, as far as zoning?
In terms of his development plan?
Yep. And what's based on this drawing here?
This drawing is directly associated with the development plan that's in item number four. It supports that proposed plan.
So when the applicant decided that he wanted to come before the town to zone this piece, he had the option to come up with whatever zonings he wanted to, right?
He could have, yes, sir. He could have requested alternative zonings that are allowed through the Dunes West PD.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Santos?
The density, is that calculated on the properties that are shown in white, or is that over the whole development?
It's the whole tract, the whole of Cambridge Square.
Right, similar to what we have over on the corner of Ben Sawyer Boulevard and Rifle Range Road project, where they did that over the whole footprint and not just where they're building it.
Yeah, there are some developments in town, yes, sir, where it's been calculated over the whole.
So what would be, how many units per acre would that be if they were to build all that multifamily on there?
I think this one is about eight units per acre, or just, it's about eight and a half units per acre. That includes the multifamily, the single family, as well as the townhome.
That's based on the whole footprint, not just the areas where they want to build it? So do you know what it would be if you were only calculating on the areas where he wants to build it?
Well, there's residential in almost all... No, I can't answer that specifically. And this is, again, this is kind of getting into the impact assessment plan, but what is shown on the impact assessment plan, this parcel is shown is only commercial. There's no residential reflected. And then there's a portion of this TC area that's also shown like a commercial out parcel. Otherwise, there is residential that's shown in this area too, and I don't know what the breakdown is between those two to be able to tell you what it...
But you're saying he's using the whole footprint, though, to calculate his density, including that commercial?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, see, that's where I have a problem.
Ms. Smith?
You mentioned the town center zoning as one of the zonings allowable according to the agreement. I think it would be important in this discussion, what other zoning options are also allowed in that agreement?
The Plan Development has zoning districts very similar to our town code. There is R1, which matches pretty much what we have in the town of Mount Pleasant for R1 lots. Those are the 10,000 square foot lots. R3, which are smaller, lot to 6,000 square foot minimum. The multifamily zoning district is an option, townhome zoning district's an option. And then they have several commercial districts. Town center is the one that's obviously been requested and is the most broad zoning district in terms of all the other commercial districts that they have, in that it, the way it allows the residential uses, and also it's the one that would allow things like gas stations and things like that. They also have a commercial zoning district, which is similar, and then office professional, and then they have ones that are more like a conservation, which would match more like the golf course properties.
Mr. Glasser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some clarity on the planning and development agreement, which is 20, I want to say 20 years old, is that correct? 1997?
1990.
1990. All right, so in that, the amount of zoning that he is requesting and shifting, has he exceeded, or, in other words, over the overall plan, he has so much, so many buckets, so many residential, so many mixed use, and I'm still getting unclear as to when he's trying to consolidate that here, which seems what he's trying to do, and put zoning here vice down the road or around the corner, does he exceed any of those buckets that affect the overall plan?
No. Well, with respect to dwelling unit numbers, the Park West is allowed 5,281, and no, they're not near that, and will likely never accomplish anything of that nature. So there is that left. That's further broken down. There's a certain number of R3 lots they can do, a certain number of R1, a certain number of multifamily, and all of those still have an allocation left. Commercial acreage is the same. There's still commercial acreage left for the TC district, the commercial district, office professional district.
And he doesn't exceed that with this?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Nicklaus?
Madam Mayor, I move that we deny the zoning of the PD amendment request set out in item number three.
A second, ma'am.
Thank you very much. A motion and a second for denial.
Madam Mayor, I think...
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I think all of us at the council table are pretty well educated on the proposal. It isn't, it's been before the council, it seems like, this entire year. I'm very much interested if it's okay, that, I'm sure a number of citizens have signed up to speak, and I'm interested in what they have to say, so I'm going to save my final comments for later on, but I'm interested in hearing from the folks who came out tonight.
Certainly. Any other...
And the applicant.
Any other discussion among council members, comments, questions? Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All council members. I can recall years ago, council addressing the issue of floating zones in the Park West, Dunes West development. And we have been, at least, it has become clear that the zoning has been driven pretty much by the developer as opposed to council. And my understanding...
Please, folks, we have a lot of comments, and everyone here, make sure everyone has their time.
It is also my understanding that legally, it is council's decision to determine the zoning. And if that has not been the case since 1990, I think when we look at our changing demographics, it certainly requires council to go back to the drawing board and revisit those zoning codes from the 1990 up until now, also look at our changing demographics, and to a great extent, I think we all recognize that much of it does not apply today as it did then. So as opposed to us making haste in terms of making a decision, I think we need to go back to the drawing board. And the developer, with all due respect, you know, I understand the scope and magnitude of economic development, but at the same time, I think when we look at the fact that the residents live here, we raise our families here, and yes, it's emotional, because when it comes to family and how we live our lives, it touches the core of us. So the developer, I think, I would like to appeal, and I know that there's been a lot of meetings going on and everything, but I would like to appeal to the developer to take into consideration that a lot of the folks who have lived here all their lives, those that have recently relocated here for whatever reason, this is home to them, and the changes, nobody likes changes, okay? Some we adjust to, and then there are others that are just not acceptable. We want to keep Mount Pleasant pleasant, and with some of the scope of the proposed development, I think it will ultimately have a dramatic impact on the town's residents' overall quality of life. And I know this has been a hotbed issue, but let's face it, folks, growth is going to happen. It's about how we manage the growth. And as most of you know, I'm getting ready to leave council, but I ask that, you know, let's work together as opposed to pulling apart from each other. And this is the town of Mount Pleasant. Let's keep it pleasant.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes-Marshall. Mr. O'Neal?
Honestly, I think the issue that's before us tonight is, and I understand bringing some clarity to the zoning on this parcel and what will go there and what could go there, I think my issue for what's before us this evening is that the request that's been made is for the most liberal zoning uses that are allowed in the entire district, so it's not... We're being asked to grant the greatest flexibility, the greatest density for which the zoning code allows for this parcel, and that's not what's in the best interest of this community. And to move forward with this zoning this evening, beyond even consideration of the impact assessment, is we've already granted a zoning that is incredibly impactful, and so where we go from here, you know, I think that's the issue that this council is struggling with, with the requests that's before us. There needs to be clarity within the map about what needs to be done, but that doesn't mean it's incumbent upon this council to grant the most liberal zoning allowance that's available in the PD, so I'll see if we can do better.
Thank you, appreciate that. We have several people signed up. What I would... Yes, I'm sorry.
I just had one more comment, Mayor. I think this is some good discussion for our growth management ordinance that we're working on now. I think that we need to include into that ordinance that whenever we have a development, it's going to be calculating densities, that they're only allowed to calculate based on the land where they're building this multifamily and not use the full footprint of the development, because certainly it makes it look like there's a lot less density going to be there when you use the full footprint, when in fact, you're going to have commercial there. So I think we ought to only allow or calculate the density based on the area where they're actually putting them, or else we're going to be right back to where we are right now with that development on the corner of Ben Sawyer and Rifle Range Road, and I think that needs to be included in our growth management program.
Thank you. Like I said, we have several residents that are signing up to speak. We're going to call you up several at a time, if you'd be ready. Please again state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, two at a time, please. The first coming directly to the podium, the second person, stand behind the lady in the Clemson orange jacket. Charlie Candle and Steve Wilkins.
Hi, my name's Charlie Candle. I live at 1532 Arden Court, which is in the Wesley Circle section indicated on this map. I wanted to come here, and I'm glad to be first, because I wanted to point out something to the council. All these people took time away from their jobs, their families, their time, free time, to come here to voice their opinion. And what you see here is Park West, you see Dunes West, you see Planner's Point, and you see Rivertown, and I've lived in all four of those neighborhoods at one time or another. These people are here because... These people are here because their voice is silent. They can't be heard. They're not being heard. They came here representing their neighborhoods, and in the beginning, they elected officials to come here and represent them. And they feel like the voices that they elected, the council, aren't exactly hearing them or not hearing them correctly. Some of y'all do, some of y'all don't. You know, I think it's important to listen to the voters. These four communities, we vote. We will vote. And many of y'all were elected based on these people voting and the people they represent. So I hope when you look at this, and you don't necessarily listen to a developer who drove down from Columbia to speak to y'all. I mentioned to him a little while ago, I said, "Well, I'm not necessarily going to let my daughter ride her bike through the apartment complexes, past the retail establishments, across the four lane to get to the pool." And he told me, "Well, I can't tell you how to raise your kids." I bought this home in a residential neighborhood. Let's keep it that way. And no, I have not sold my house in October 15th and moved to another neighborhood, which some of the council has.
Thank you. We will have order. Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, wait a moment. I want to ask you a question. Come on back up.
Please.
Sure. You made accusations that this council doesn't listen to their citizens. Sir, you're incorrect. This body listens to every single thing that we hear or we see. Just because we don't arrive at the same conclusion that you have, doesn't mean we don't listen. Everybody's here tonight. We're glad to have them. We love the interaction, and we're going to listen to every one of them. Please, don't come before this body in this room and accuse us, let me finish, of not listening. We listen to everything you say. So thank you for coming out, ma'am. Thank you for wanting to make a difference in the community we all live in.
And remember, we elected you to be our voice.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next. Folks, listen, we cannot clap behind every speaker. How many people are here from Park West, from these communities, Park West, Dunes West, Pleasant, Rivertown? Thank you very much. We hear you. We hear you. It's great. We're glad you're here, and we will take everyone who signed up to speak. But if we continue to have these outbursts, as you are outbursting, we are going to ask you to leave. We have got hard work to do here. We are here to do it. But we have got to give attention to the citizens who came here. So I will ask you to hold your applause. And if you do not hold your applause, and you continue to do and his, I will ask you to leave, and we will have you escorted. Apologize. Yes, sir, it's your time.
Sir, please, Georgia Wilkins, come on up.
Hi, Steve Wilkins. I live at 3,600 Henrietta Hartford Road in Park West. I just want to make a few comments, that I really appreciate the comment about keeping Mount Pleasant pleasant, and how can we control the focus? We can develop this town into gridlock, very easily. The amount of people that are coming, the releases that we read in the paper yesterday, about 4,000 new jobs, where do people want to live? It's pretty straightforward. So I ask you to be thoughtful and mindful about how we come together to make that conversation happen. Yesterday, I had a conversation with developers, with some of the council members, and a number of the HOA presidents within Park West, to move that forward, to lay out a list of things that we want to see addressed, so that we can specifically sit down and have that dialogue, and come to a reasonable settlement. That's going to be developed. There's going to be building there. So let's get past that, let's get over that, and let's get to something that's meaningful for the environment, for the quality of living that we've bought there, and maintain the status as opposed to seeing it dwindle down, and our property values go down, crime goes up, and other problems. So, I ask for careful consideration and for engagement. And with that, I appreciate the proposal that's been raised. I think that divorcing these two items is wrong. I think put them both together and deny them, put them both together and approve them, put them both together and defer, and let us have an opportunity to sit down and explain the conversation that we had yesterday, and I think we can get to some common ground. But let's do that together. That would be my pledge.
Thank you.
Jerry Scurry. As you come up, would you also mind, you give an address, but give the neighborhood, if you happen to be in a neighborhood, love to hear which neighborhoods are up tonight. You know, Coat Bridge, Tennesan, whatever it might be.
Just keep in mind, it's part of your two minutes.
Up to four minutes, it's up to three.
Georgia Wilkins, 3,600 Henrietta Hartford in Tennesan and Mount Pleasant, I mean, in Park West. I appreciate very much all the time that you're spending, and I've seen that you've spent hours on this. My comment now is merely, after having lived from one coast to the other and in the middle of the country, if I ever saw a town that is a wonderful place to live, that is in danger of destruction, that desperately needs a professional master plan for future growth in the city, it's this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victoria Muschaf. Come on, sir. Yes, sir.
Jerry, you, next. We're just calling the next one behind you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Scurry. I live in Laurel Lakes, actually. But here to support the people of Park West, and I understand your pain. We deal with central Mount Pleasant where I live. But a couple of comments. This is a lot about money. You know, I've been in the real estate business for 40 years. I'm not rich, but I'm current. So, anyway, quickly, this is about merchant building, apartment buildings, is what this is about. Please understand it. The Boulevard sold for 66.5 million. He probably made 20, 30 million, maybe 40 million on that one. The last one that sold is a Windward, I think it's called Windward at Long Point. It sold in January of this year for 55 million, $500,000. The market value was 20 million. Pretty good deal, right? So what's going to happen if they build these apartments in your neighborhood? He builds 300, I don't know what the number is. It'll cost him in the mid-30s to build it. He will lease it up, get these great rents, and he'll sell it for over 60 million. So that's what's going on here. The council knows it, everybody knows it. So I think you've got to take into account, this is not a goldmine for developers, you know? It's got to be slowed down. It's got to be put down for a while. And it's going to continue if you let it. So these big multifamily projects just need to be stopped. And Mr. Santos was talking about the one up on the corner of Rifle Range Road and Ben Sawyer. That is ludicrous. That's 260 units going on five acres, where you can't even move around. They also have permission to transplant grand trees up there. I mean, it's just gotten crazy, and I appreciate the council dealing with me and responding to my emails the way y'all do, because I only get tired of hearing from me. But, guys, it's all about the money. And the money goes, where does the money go? Well, it goes to taxes. Boulevard pays 700,000 a year. That's a lot of money. Goes to the school board, comes back to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Scurry.
Okay. Thank you.
Walter Winkler.
Yes, Ms. Yurk, no, Victoria, you're next.
Oh, I'm confused.
No, that's okay. We'll have one up, and we'll have one ready.
It's easy to confuse.
Okay. Victoria Muschaf, 3376 Tumer Killen Circle, Coat Bridge. We all know that Land Tech prudently purchased Park West 1,900 acres at a fire sale. What a wise investment, given that just before the Great Recession, Land Sec told the Central, sold the Central Cambridge Square parcels alone for nearly 9.3 million dollars. Returning back to these parcels represents icing on a sweet cake. While we don't begrudge Kevin Steeleman's double dip, we do find statements that the company will lose money to the Cambridge Square master plan town-village as implemented to be problematic. Please support Park West, Dunes West residents with your vote against this proposal to protect the roundabout for our community. These parcels are plotted as our neighborhood node. In the comprehensive plan, a neighborhood node is an area used for placemaking to bring vitality and sustainability to residential communities. Town planners and residents have expressed broad interest in placemaking, including increasing all the amenities that come with special places, such as cultural destinations, public art, and event facilities. Please do the right thing by voting no to preserve the town's balanced plan, create the heart of Park West, and to ensure the vitality of one of Mount Pleasant's gems, Park West. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Reese.
My name is Walter Winkler. I live at 3,494 Ashwick Street in Wellesley Place neighborhood, which is adjacent to what we thought was going to be the town center, which is now called Cambridge Square. We just moved here two years ago, so we're relatively new. And when we moved in, we had the understanding that this parcel was going to be developed as a town center with townhouses. Some of them are already built up there at the northern end of the plot, and then some shops and two-story buildings. Starting this year, we saw signs at the roundabout indicating that Planning Commission meeting was going to be held. I attended the meeting in January, and I attended another meeting in April. I didn't speak at those meetings, but dozens and dozens of my neighbors did. There was not one resident that spoke in favor of this zoning request. The only one that spoke in favor of it was the developer. Now I see that it's progressed further. The other thing, after we moved in here, we got acquainted with the traffic on Park West Boulevard and on Gray Marsh Road, where we live in Wellesley Park, after 7:00 AM in the morning, the backup of traffic on Gray Marsh, people peel off of that into Berkeley and Wellesley Park to avoid the traffic circle. This should be the other way around, that the traffic from the neighborhoods should go onto the main roads and-
Thank you very much, sir.
Oh, I said, okay.
That's your two minutes.
I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
One more thing I have to say.
That's fair.
Very quickly, that bothered me, at the planning meetings, the folks from the town indicated that there were no plans to do anything to widen Park West Boulevard and Gray Marsh Boulevard for the next 20 or 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
I won't be around then.
Darren McDowell.
Brian Reese, 2011 Hammond Drive, I live in Berkeley. I'll pick off where the gentleman left off. I think the infrastructure in Park West is suffering substantially. Not only widening is an issue, but just the quality of the road, the potholes that are there, the quality of the road itself is an issue. We've lived there for 10 years and been told every year by the HOA that the road's either going to get resurfaced or widened, and that never has happened. So regardless of how you zone this, it's a problem with infrastructure, ingress and egress in and out of Park West is a nightmare. So I would urge you guys to vote against this, and put something in production that you can get some infrastructure in place in Park West, and improve the quality of the roads.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lucy Valsek.
Darren McDowell, I live at 1437 Bloomingdale Lane in Marshwalk in Park West. I'm a member of the HOA Board in Mark West, a member of the Alliance, and a nominee for the Advisory Board of Park West. I spoke to a lot of people about this project. I spoke to them at the rec center, I spoke to them at the school, I spoke to them in our community. And a couple reoccurring things came up. First of all, two years ago, a week, two years ago, you guys put funds to repave Park West. It has yet to be done. We drive in potholes, day in and day out. You paved up to the entrance of Park West, so Dunes West got done, but Park West Boulevard is full of potholes. I'd like you guys to address the roundabout at Gray Marsh Road that was approved, I believe, about nine months ago, in October, as well as the paving of Park West, before we even talk about zoning something commercial up here. In closing, I just want to add one more thing that I've noticed in living here the past four years. In Marshwalk, homes take days, roads take years, schools take decades, and bridges take centuries. And the timing for this has got to change. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the last two folks have addressed the road. Can Mr. Morrison just give an update? Well, we've got a lot of residents here around the timing of-
Certainly. So y'all don't have to spend any more time concerned where the roundabout is. Mr. Morrison, can you tell us when we will be paving Park West Boulevard and when the roundabout will begin?
I'll give a little bit of background in the fact that the town did last year allocate the funding. If the mechanism to deliver all the resurfacing, not just to Park West, for all the other roads in the town, was a contract that we entered into with Charleston County, because they actually, we get more bang for our buck. This one, it goes, it's a larger contract. So, that contract has been delayed a little bit, due to weather. The latest information we have is July, mid-July for the paving of Park West Boulevard. Now, and that is from Queens Gateway to the fire station. The roundabout is on schedule, was only approved by council last July 1. It's been expedited. We're in right-of-way right now, the design is complete, and before the end of the year, the roundabout should be constructed. That's where we're at.
Was there also some improvements at the 41 and Joe Bestinworth? Do we have some?
We talked about an improvement project we submitted to sales tax, for sales tax at CTC. We haven't heard back on that.
Okay. So we're continuing to work on those issues. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Todd Muschaf.
My name is Lucy Blasick. I live in Foxmore. And this Cambridge development is going to have a tremendous impact on our community. It will open a driveway through, and when we moved there, we were promised a town center. And we would like to keep it that way, to keep our community that we've worked so hard to keep in a number-one condition. We would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Marci Videli.
Todd Muschaf, I live at 3376 Tumer Killen Circle in Coat Bridge in Park West. I'm on the, a member of the HOA Board there. The zoning has, I understand the zoning has to come before council for a vote, and that means that council has a choice. Council isn't a rubber stamp. It doesn't have to permit what it doesn't want to permit. Park West development really has no significant investment in this particular piece of property. They don't own it, they haven't bought it, they sold it for millions years ago, and they're going to buy it back at a much lower price, possibly, but they don't own it. All they have is a picture. I won't call it a pretty picture, but they've got a picture. The council needs to, and I think from the comments, and I'm assuming it's what you all look for, is the best long-term interest for the people of Mount Pleasant. And that includes the people who invest their time here, their lives here, their families here, and their homes here. Each of you has a choice to do the right thing, and I encourage you all to pass Councilman Nichols' motion to deny the project. Thank you.
Mary Horus.
Marci Videli, 2016 Andover Way in the Arlington subdivision. I am also on the HOA Board, have been for several years. I moved here in 2000, and not to repeat what everyone has said, I have sent you numerous letters. I think we're all very much concerned with the high density, with the traffic, with schools, with the safety issue, which has not been brought up again, as far as emergencies if it happens. There's only one entrance, egress, that's it, in that center. I think that what we were all promised is a town center, and I think that you have recognized that. I know many of you have answered me when I've sent you a letter, so I do believe you're listening. And I do believe that the comments that you made this evening, I think that you know what the residents want. I think we keep repeating ourselves. I'm sorry for the people that are not polite to you, because I do believe that you have given an awful lot of time. I think that we need to meet with the developer, I think you need to meet with the developer, I think we need to scale back, and I do believe that that's what you're going to do tonight. Thank you so much.
Elizabeth Gush.
Mary Horus, I live at 3224 Pigna Tele Crescent, Dunes West. I'm here to remind you that all the neighborhoods are impacted. Anyway, I just have one observation and a comment. The observation is, Park West does have multifamily units. It has a development called Madison. I think you might be familiar with that. I don't know whether it's, I think it was apartments changed to condos, but that's an older one. It's done in what I call the Mount Pleasant way. It's set back from the road. The egress to it is quite good, because it's a part of Park West Boulevard, this four-lane. And the one we're looking at now, the proposal we have before us, would put a high-density apartment complex right up against a roundabout. We don't have any roundabouts in Mount Pleasant that have that kind of density immediately. We don't have any roundabouts in Mount Pleasant that have that kind of density immediately around the roundabout. And this is a very trafficked area, you know that already from all the photographs we sent you. And the other comments, if this impressed my husband in the paper, I want to straighten this out. The developer's concession was that, one of them was, that he would lower the number of units from 5,200 to 3,600. And I just want to point out that he never intended to build 5,200. He's on record from a letter to one of the residents in 2008. At that time, he thought they would be building a maximum of 2,900. So it's not really, 5,200 is not a real number. This is not like they're reducing the number, the real number. And I must say, I do appreciate you listening to us. I know that you hate it sometimes, but it really is nice that we can send one email address and it hits all of you. Thank you very much.
And we do get them, ma'am. We do get them. We get a couple emails. Brian Lewis?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Gush, and I live at 2112 Beckenham Drive in Masonboro. And I come to you tonight as a longtime resident of Park West. We've lived there for 15 years. I'm on my third, we just moved into our third home in Park West. I remember when we first, when I was in my young twenties, when we first moved in, and there was a sign from, it said something about from the 100,000s to the 1,000,000s. And we've, you know, we've done that progression, and it's been wonderful. I have four children, one at each of the schools in Park West and one at Wando. I own my own small business. My office is in Park West. I've leased an office off of Bessemer Road. My grandmother lives at Summerby in Park West. I am Park West. I ran the Park West swim team for the last five summers. I'm officially retired, but, which was a full-time job. I think something that hasn't been brought up enough, and I've seen a few of the school teachers here, the schools, these schools in Park West cannot handle what 200 or 50 or 300 units will do to these schools. Every single school, as y'all know, has trailers. Carolina Park is growing by the day. I've already heard from, that at Laurel Hill, they're not, even with the kids leaving next year at Laurel, from the Rivertown rezoning, that they're not even reducing any class sizes because of the influx from Carolina Park. So by throwing this many more hundreds of kids at these schools, there's nowhere for them to go. I mean, there's just no room at the schools. And we would love a town center, just not the apartments. Thank you.
Learning Conference. Joe Tellekson?
Good evening. Brian Lewis, 1656 E. B. Ford Road, Wheatstone subdivision. Thank you very much for taking our comments and listening to and hearing, not just listening, but hearing what it is where his residents have to say. I think there's a big distinction that needs to be made between those two, listening and hearing require two different skill sets. First of all, I want to say that we have to really pay attention to the fact that in 1990, when the plan was established, how many people lived in Mount Pleasant or in Park West in 1990? Okay, there was not very many residents there in that area. So this plan that was established back then was against a blank canvas. So now that there are residents there who purchased their homes under the guise of a master plan that said that this town center was going to be a town center with nice, pretty drawings, yes, small print that said there's a way out of it, but very small print. We all purchased our homes on the basis of that pretty picture that was presented to us. What it amounts to, to many of us, is bait and switch, okay? Pretty pictures, small print, and broken promises. This area cannot contain the density that's being proposed for it. If anyone's driven through the roundabout there, they know at 7:00 in the morning it's impassable. So the emergency issues that have been brought up are very pertinent. But also, there's just no way to get that density of people through it without widening the roads and making some major infrastructure improvements. And none of those things have been talked about. I think those things are first, before we talk about adding significantly to the density and to the population of the area. Thank you.
My name is Joe Tellekson. I live at 1729 James Bassford Place, which is in Wheatstone in Park West. I also applaud members of council, Madam Mayor, for you taking the time to listen to us. I appreciate the time you put in your positions. That said, I think the obvious has become that we have a problem with the infrastructure and the roads. And at some point, that needs to get addressed. That's with existing populations and without further build-out that is occurring. The second part is we're, you've got 70% of the neighborhoods up off of Gray Marsh behind that circle. 70% of the neighborhoods in Park West. So when those neighborhoods come out, that intersection, that circle is critical for those people. It's the only way they can get out of there, either left or right. And presently, if you go there during any busy time, school, et cetera, you'll see, it just, it isn't working today. I think in respect to Cambridge Square, what's presently planned is something that I don't think is going to work. I think it is possible to get together with the developer, if everybody's in good faith, and work to a solution that works for all of us residents, the developer and the town. So I would ask you to follow Mr. Nichols' recommendation and veto it as is. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Ryan, 3186 John Bartram Place in Foxmore. I'd just like to urge you to disapprove these plans as they've been put forth. This is the wrong area for this kind of development. I do know that we do have to have development, but we need to focus on managed, responsible development. I'd also like to urge you to think about the connection between Cambridge Square and Foxmore. That would create a serious hardship on our neighborhood. We do experience cut-through traffic as it is, a lot of which do speed through our neighborhood, and I worry about the safety. And I also do worry about the impact of all of this on our schools every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Don Mugler. I live at 1881 West Countyan Drive in the Masonboro section of Park West. My first, I'd like to point out this map here because it makes it seem like this whole area is so big. But actually, it's a very small area if you walk the area. And what the developer is trying to do is now put a development within a development. And I don't think that was the intention of Park West to begin with. Here they want an amenity center, a swimming pool solely for their residents of Cambridge And I guess if I were to use that swimming pool, I wouldn't be allowed to. So how could they get away with building a community within a community within Park West? So I ask that you turn down this proposal and this rezoning as it now stands. Thank you.
My name is Al Segazio. I live at 3217 John Bartram Place in Foxmore in Park West. The new version of Cambridge Square is really a glorified apartment complex that doesn't belong in a major intersection in the heart of Park West. The fit is so wrong, I'm baffled that we're even talking about this. If built, this apartment complex will be a monstrosity that seemed to fall out of the sky rather than blend into the landscape. The new plan will bring about 500 cars from just the residents alone, all entering and exiting the complex from an already congested traffic circle. The developer wants to radically deviate from a plan that was approved in 2006 because of, as he puts it, changing market conditions. The market conditions always change. Apartment complexes, however, are permanent. And the spirit of Park West neighborhood should not be adversely altered simply because the developer wants to make a bigger profit. New proposal does not strike a good balance between a developer's business plan and the quality of life current residents of Park West have come to expect. I don't know how much of Park West is actually developed, but it's got to be close or more than 90%. Plans for the heart of the neighborhood have been approved for over nine years, and radically changing that plan now is a slap in the face of the current residents. So reject this plan, stop the bait and switch, and go back to the plan that so many residents, current residents, want. And that's why they bought their houses where they did. Thanks.
Kevin Kunein, 3032 River Vista Way in the harbor at Dunes West. I'm here to speak about emergency protection. What are the fire trucks going to do when this is built? And it's not just this little project, or this big project in the middle of a big neighborhood that we're looking at. Think about, one incident happens and the fire trucks are committed. Second incident, you need them to come from somewhere else. Now, let's just hypothetically say they come from 6 Mile. It's over eight miles to the back of Dunes West. Eight miles during rush hour is not eight minutes. We're talking 20, 25 minutes by car. The fire truck can't jump on the grass like cars might be able to. It's a lot tougher, they can move quicker at times, but in congestion, they're out of business. I know that Station 6 is coming to Carolina Park, again, over seven miles to the back of Dunes West, probably the same to the back of Rivertown. So that leaves, and I ask these questions, what if? And I spoke to the good chief earlier, he said, well, we'll get mutual aid. And I respectfully disagree that that's even possible, because your mutual aid is coming from Daniel Island. That's eight miles on Clements Ferry, over a bridge under construction into Dunes West. 12 miles? Really? That's your first company showing up when your child is stuck on the third floor of a fire? I mean, we need to look at this comprehensively. It's not necessarily against Mr. Steelman or this project, but this area is its own little city, and the possibility of that second event happening is real. And with all this construction in every direction, you can't get a truck through Bessemer, you can't get a truck up 41, you certainly can't get them up Clements Ferry over a bridge that's under construction. So what happens? What if? I need you to ask that question and more importantly, attempt to get an answer before we allow something like this. They're up on the fourth floor of a building, there's something called vertical response time in the business. You can get the truck to the base of the building, you still got to go up four stories. Okay? And then if you're up there and there's a fire in the back of Rivertown, they have to come down to get to the truck to go over. That's minutes, and that's lives. So please ask that question, what if? Thank you for your time.
Greg Sidwell?
Kevin, you're... Greg, you're next.
Kevin Steelman, 3301 Salterback Street. I'm here with Park West Development. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me. I would point out first that we are here voluntarily seeking an amendment to the PD. The PD itself expressly authorizes the shift in land uses that we proposed in this application, and specifically states that it is not an amendment to the PD. However, in an act of good faith, we've reached out and let the proposed amendment go through the process. We have routinely moved densities within Park West. Over the past 18 years, we've developed over 3,000 units without amending our map. There is not a use on the property that's been developed that conforms to the 1990 map that's there, and if it is, it was pure coincidence. We have sufficient density remaining in our PD to accommodate the proposed development. Everything about the plan conforms with the development standards of the PD, and we ask that you would consider approval of the plan. Before buying the property, we relied on representation from the town that it would honor the PD. We entered into agreement in 1996 with the town. It was honored for 18 years. With all the property that we've developed, and we would ask that you continue to honor that commitment. Since the town has made the decision to have these changes go through, they have unanimously approved multiple changes of land use in Dunes West with no plans, unanimously approving changes from R1 to town center with no plan, unanimously approving 180 units of multifamily with no plan. And I would just ask that we get equal treatment under the law and that you honor our PD. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
With your forbearance, we would like to have the team go through my briefing, our briefing, two minutes each, call the time, and this way we'll run efficiently through four. Okay with you?
So, how did we get here? We started out 1990, next slide. We started out in 1990 with conceptual town center. We went to 66 townhomes. In 2006, we went to 91 residential. And then just last December, came before you in January, the old 339 unanimously denied that, and we're back here today with 305 residential units. The buildings indeed came down from four stories to three. Density only reduced 22. Did that by inducing, introducing studio apartments. Bottom line, still too high-density reductions are not enough. Next slide. Would like to remind you the town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan, which protects the character of residential area, does quality of life, and it supports intense mix-use only when sufficient infrastructure is in place. It's, this current property is zoned as R3, not multifamily, and the town of Mount Pleasant future land use plan recommended for R3. Next slide. So the Cambridge Square apartments, we believe, apartments are okay, it's the issue of how many there are. The location on Cambridge Square in the middle of a high-speed or dense thoroughfare is inappropriate. We feel it's better at Park West, whether it's existing town center zoning or somewhere else.
Thank you. Those are your two.
Perfect. Steve?
Steve Gilder, 2135 Balder Park Drive, I'm in Berkeley. I'm going to beat a dead horse here because I'm going to talk about traffic. The PWD has told us the changes included in the current plan will have a negligible impact on traffic. We all know that the December and March proposals both show, I'm sorry, March over December shows an increase in traffic. I don't know how a reduction can cause an increase, but that's my problem. The commercial space, with the commercial space reduction, it causes traffic to go up. The current proposal shows that. In addition, the increase in residential traffic occurs at the worst possible time, during rush hour. Traffic problems will get worse. Video, please. This is a video I took, you can make that bigger if you would. This is a video I took in the morning of Monday. There was an accident down here, and you see a police car go through. And if you count in seconds, it takes them about 15 seconds to get down and see, come out of the traffic and get down to the accident. That's a pretty good response. But you can see what it does to traffic. Just imagine 200 more cars coming through that area. It's not going to be pretty. You can stop that. While increasing Park West Boulevard to four lanes is, may help, it won't decrease the density. Imagine putting Andover, Arlington, and Berkeley around the traffic circle. It's just not right. Traffic, uh, traffic, uh, next slide, please. Traffic also affects the emergency vehicles, as Kevin said, you know? Having a, wrong slide, next slide.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You can roll out, but...
I hope that didn't take off my tongue. We heard, we heard in January 2015, a resident told us that there was a heart attack that was narrowly missed. If you look at the white car coming in on the left-hand side, it's very important, just remember that car. As you can see, the traffic is still backed up even after the accident was removed. There's the white car. We're going to pan across and show you that the traffic is still backed up even after the accident was removed, or the vehicles involved in the accident were removed. And as we come back, look what we've got. We've got a fire engine.
Thank you, sir. That's your two minutes.
Just one more thing. It took the fire engine a minute and 10 seconds to get through that roundabout until it cleared, not including the time it waited in that queue to get to the roundabout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Victoria Hallis, 3182 John Bartram Place in Foxmore. I am the president of the HOA. I also represent the Alliance. The developer keeps talking about the market and how the market has changed, but the present market forces are a deal for the 2002 plan. North End Commercial Brokerage Survey shows occupancy approaching 98%. So we can support more commercial. And just remember, sometimes you can't undo what's done. And just remember, sometimes you can't undo what's done. If we approve the wrong project, negative impact is forever. The market supports commercial retail. Vested rights, LandTAC does not own the land. The recent proposal is merely a piece of paper that doesn't convey vested rights based on investment. No obligation to approve. I urge you, please disapprove this plan.
Andrea Lewis, 1656 Seabee Fort Road, Wheatstone subdivision. So the members of Alliance have spoken, and basically what they're saying in summary is the density is too high and the location is not right. Now, we are glad that you have ideas to improve the traffic, but that doesn't fix the density problem. And right now, we're supersizing. We're putting everything in the Town Village, the Town Center area, and that was a promise. So we want to make sure that we, they deliver on promise. Town Council does have the legal authority to approve or deny the proposal and determine the future for the quality of life over the quantity of units. Now remember, developers go, but developments stay. Developers go, but developments stay. And bottom line is, it's our home. As a wise person, Dorothy, the Wizard of Oz said, "I wore my red slippers. If you click your heels three times, there's no place like home. There's no place like home. There is no place like home." And so what we're asking you to do is deny, as you did in January. Do the right thing for the future of the residents. Remember that hashtag quality over quantity. Hashtag promises delivered. Hashtag back to 2006. Thanks.
Annie Strauss.
My name is Carmine Batista. I live at 3538 Ashwick.
Speak into that microphone for me, with the best of hand.
Can't hear me, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Carmine Batista. I live at 3538 Ashwick Street, and that's in Berkeley in Park West. You've probably heard enough so far about the disastrous consequences of this proposal. I'd like just to make a few remarks, and take a few moments, to view the issue from a public policy perspective. As I understand it, the rationale for the petition to alter the ordinance, as stated by Mr. Steelman and reported in The Post and Courier, is that the change in the economic climate has made the development of the property as pre-approved less or even non-profitable. Although I might sympathize with the owners, who may be underwater as far as I know, that is not a rationale for a bailout. If I came to the council and said that I bought a house in 2006, and now I would like to sell it, but it is now worth less than I paid for it, and even less than I owe, in other words, it would be underwater, so please give me approval to convert it to a multifamily dwelling so I can sell it and make a profit, what would you say? You would say no. We can't do that, because it would negatively affect the value of the properties of the neighbors that you have in order to bail you out. And you'd be right. And this is exactly what is going on here. And it is an important public policy debate. You see, in any bailout scenario, somebody has to pay the bill. In this case, it will be paid by the impacted homeowners in Park West, whose equity values are threatened to decline. And the decline, taken as a whole, being transferred as an equity gain to the owners of the Four Corners in question. I read that for this transfer of asset values...
That's your two minutes.
...that the owners agree to give back a share of their transferred gain to the town in the form of paying for fixing up Park West Boulevard. Sounds great.
Sir.
The town is going to get repairs for free. No.
That's your two minutes, sir.
All right, let me just finish this sentence. I'm petitioning the council to do what's right. Bad policy doesn't make good government.
Thank you, sir. Wait, 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 please, hold your applause, please.
Annie Strauss, you here. James Moses. Donna Adriano, Andriano.
Hi, I'm James Moses. I'm at 3129 Pignatelli Crescent in Dunes West. Thanks for having me here this evening and for allowing me the time. It seems, if memory serves me correctly, that, and I'm a retired physician, so the EMS part of the presentation tonight is very important to me. Seems that some time ago, we disallowed the development of a gas station and a convenience center at the Rivertown 41 intersection for many of the reasons that we've discussed tonight. There seems to be confusion on my part, and I think of some of the residents. I was at the Planning and Development Committee recently. No Town Council approval of an amended 2006 plan apparently was brought to my attention. I would like to present the fact that a detailed plan was proposed, presented, and marketed to the Park West community in 2006 based on a plan by Searl Centoring, and what the Alliance references as a Town Village design of the Park West community. And this was approved by a Design Review Board. Am I to assume that that approval is not valid today with regard to the question of development? I think that the traffic studies that have been done here, and I want to make one point clear, the roundabout is certainly an area of contention. But let's not forget about the intersection of Park West Boulevard and Bessemer Road, which is a disaster. So I think that it's been mentioned that the volume of traffic is going to decrease. Please understand that for everyone who occupies a unit, whether it be a townhouse, whether it be a townhome, I don't see less than two cars in anybody's driveway at any one time. Thank you for your time.
Bob Brimmer.
Hello, I'm Donna Andriano, 1508 Clarendon Way, Foxmore. My husband and I have been here six years. We can see the changes in those few years. I can imagine how the original Mount Pleasant homeowners feel with the increase in population, traffic, lights, and traffic in general, traffic lights. We used to go to the beach on a holiday weekend, and it was empty. Now it's never empty. We experienced the gridlock on April 26th at the beach with the fire and ambulance trying to get into the county parking lot. But that's another story. No one was able to move. We moved here from New Jersey, and for the exact reason I'm here tonight: population, congestion, traffic. My family moved from New York to New Jersey in the 50s. At that time, that part of New Jersey was all farms and dirt roads. We didn't notice the development here, the development there, the highways and traffic lights. And then one day, you turn around, and it's a city. It becomes an overcrowded town with overcrowded schools, traffic everywhere, overcrowded hospitals, no beach parking, mom and pop businesses closed because of the big-box competition. However, in Mount Pleasant, growth is quite obvious. It doesn't happen where you don't realize it's happening. It's very obvious to the people in Mount Pleasant, as well as people from other towns. And with the increase in vehicles on the road, people get more and more tense, and more and more rude, and crime increases. Honestly, why do you think northerners come here? Because, no, not that we want that, we're trying to get away from that. And we get the blame for all the growth over here, we get the blame, but it's not us. We're not passing the laws that say, yes, you can develop these communities. And you can't just keep widening the roads. The quality of life that you loved and came here for is gone, it's lost. Quality of life is very important. We're counting on the integrity, the morals, and the values of our mayor, Town Council, and the Planning and Zoning Committee to protect Mount Pleasant and the current residents, taxpayers, voters who love and are proud to be Mount Pleasant residents.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please stop the high density.
Jimmy Bagwell.
Bob Brimmer, 2380 Parsonage Woods Lane, that's in the Arlington subdivision of Park West. I hadn't noticed written for tonight, but let me just say, I think the issues here of zoning, of the legalities, of the impacts are well-understood. They've been well-betted by the applicant, by the Planning Commission, by you all, so I think those issues are out there, you know where everybody stands. I guess what's left here is just your vote. And I'll go back and quote Councilman Glasson from the Police Judicial and Legal Committee, when he stated that while planning commissioners should be held to the ordinances and the laws in their decision-making, Town Council members actually can vote their conscience or vote what the people want. And I haven't heard anybody here tonight say that they want this project as submitted. So really, you all have the opportunity to show your support for your citizens by voting this down. It's complex, I understand. I've seen this project several times, I know there's a lot of issues here. But the reality is, the impacts here on the folks who've already invested in Park West are significant. And I will ask you tonight for the same thing that I asked for in the last Planning Commission meeting, and that is for this project, for the zoning request, to be denied, and ask the applicant, the developer, and the residents to once again sit down and try to come up with a compromise plan that's mutually acceptable to everybody. In Park West, we've had the history of having a design charrette years ago, where we sat down with designers and planned out Cambridge Square. I would like to recommend that same process happen now, so that everybody can sit down, talk about what they disagree on, but also talk about the areas of agreement. Because I think there are many areas of agreement here that have not been explored yet. I'm looking for a win-win. I've lived in Park West for 13 years. I am looking for an opportunity to have something that we can all be proud of, that the residents can live with...
Thank you, Mr. Brimmer.
...and that Mr. Steelman can put his name on and feel proud about. Thank you.
Dave Golden.
My name is Jimmy Bagwell. I live at 207 William Street, and I've lived in Mount Pleasant for 66 years. I served on Town Council for 12 years. I could go through a lot of the things that people have already said here tonight, but the bottom line is, ladies and gentlemen, the people who are speaking up on these issues are not a vocal minority. From Carolina Park to Charleston Harbor, the people in this town are tired of it. They're tired of seeing their quality of life destroyed, they're tired of seeing their infrastructure overrun, their schools overcrowded, and they look to you, the people who we elected to protect this town, to ensure that that doesn't happen. I cannot tell you how many people I've talked to in the last 18 months who feel the same way that all of these people do. I urge you to vote for Mr. Nichols' motion. I urge you to support it. And tomorrow night, when the Planning Commission meetings, and all the experts come in from out of town and tell us how we ought to live here in Mount Pleasant, I say that's not the way we want to have it. I think there are plenty of people right in this crowd tonight, in the crowds that I've seen in the last 18 months, who know what we want in Mount Pleasant. I urge you to vote this down, and ladies and gentlemen, there's no reason in this world why all of these people should have had to come up here for the last six months to protect their interest. This plan should have been voted down a long time ago, the developers should have been packed up and sent back to Columbia. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'm Dave Golden. I live in Tennyson Community at Park West. I am president of the HOA board there. I don't believe Mr. Steelman should be sent back packing up to Columbia. I believe he has a right to make some money. But I also believe that he has the same right as we do, and that is to sit down and work together and come up with a mutual situation in which there is a win-win for all of us.
Good evening. My name is Pat Brokhammer. I live at 3545 Tumerkillen Circle in Coatbridge Park West. Thank you for your time this evening. This morning, I had the pleasure of observing the traffic going to and from during the school time between 7:15 and 8:30. During that time, I saw many, many vehicles pass through the roundabout and go on up the road. Many of those vehicles had very few children in them, if any at all. People were just going about their daily business, going to doctor's appointments, going to work, going to the store, just wherever they go. And many people were walking and jogging and so forth, which is what we want to see in a community. But the traffic does prohibit that kind of quality of life in our community, and I urge you to deny this project. And I'd also like to point out, right about in here, where the road goes to two lanes on each side, and goes from 4 to 2, I would like to see that grassy area improved upon with the width of two lanes, so we have two lanes going in and two lanes coming out of Park West. I don't know who owns those parcels right now, but I think that, you know, if it is owned by homeowners associations, they would be willing, I'm sure, to part with that for what they pay in their taxes every year on those particular parcels. The schools are very important to us, that's why we moved into a community that has schools. The trailers are not a good thing for the children. Children should not have a remembrance of going to school and being taught in a trailer. That really harkens back centuries ago, and we should not have that. I would like to see someone consider connecting a road from the back...
Thank you, ma'am.
...by the villages into Park West, or into Killenham Park. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. She had the dubious distinction of being our last speaker. We do have a motion for denial, and second on the table, we've had lots of discussion, we've had discussion from the citizens. Mr. Glasson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, awesome points. And I took about five pages of notes. And I think when Bob Brimmer came up, he was correct, and that one of the first speakers, Steve Wilkins, when he came up, was also correct. There needs to be a continued sit-down. But just a little background for some of you that don't know how we got to this point, because when Mr. Bagwell came up here and said to send him packing, and it's naive to say that, because in the end of the day, the developer has the right to develop something in that land. And when we initially sat down with the homeowners presidents, the first meeting was an impromptu that was called out at O'Brien's, and then the second meeting, we formally called the homeowners presidents, and I called a meeting. And Mr. Nichols and Mr. Smith were there, Mr. Brimmer was there as well. And we tried to come up with a plan that, knowing that the developer has the rights, we don't want to sit, shoot it down, send them on, and we have a right, as councilman, Mr. Brimmer was right again, as council, we can vote up or down something, and then we have to share the consequences of what the legalities of that are, because we bear the burden of the fiduciary responsibility to you. That's who we answer to. So as we sat in that first meeting, the homeowners presidents came up with a list. We took that to the developer, came up with a second list, and we took that to the developer. And in every single instance, and some of them were the reducing of the numbers from 5281 to 3600, and a woman that was up there and said, "Well, that's not a big deal." Well, it is, and it isn't. There's no way he's going to build that many homes in there. And when that was addressed and set, they had no idea how it would come out. However, it does, when we push that number down, and we have a contractually obligated commitment from the developer, it instills and forces him to turn over the homeowners association, which, according to the way the current plan sits, would never have to do that forever. And he can collect our money, and legally, we would have to go after him to do that. Now, I'm not trying to throw Mr. Steelman under the bus, but a little bit is okay, he'll toughen up. The second is, that as the, it also protects Park West, separate from the Dunes West, it protects him from selling those homes, or those sites, those numbers, over to the Dunes West side, which he has the right to do. So it protects, and that was what the presidents came up with, like it or dislike it. Also, to reduce the overall height. The original, if you remember in January, was four stories, and it was unanimous. I believe it was a nine-to-zero vote against. And that pushed the meeting towards us trying, and the first thing said, "It's too high. It's not consistent with the complexes that are in there, that are three stories." So that was brought up. And until the Planning Commission meeting, I'm sorry, the Planning Committee meeting, when I talked to Andrea afterwards, she said, "Well, can he go to two?" And so what that popped on as a lightbulb is that additional communication needed to occur. And there's other issues that were in there. The number-one concern was traffic. And it's ironic that we sit here and trying to figure out how to widen the road, knowing that we have had, as Mr. Morrison mentioned, we have approved the funding in this year's budget to resurface that road. And just for the record, for those that don't know, I'm 16-year resident, own property in Dunes West, Rivertown. Dunes West, Rivertown, and I currently am renting in, I know it's an evil, but it's been brought up by one of the residents, that I'm an evil renter as I prepare to build a house. So I'm going to rent for the next year and a half or two years, until that's completed, and it's a little bit more complex than I thought. But I've been here 16 years, and I deal with that traffic every single day, because that's what the number one concern was. How do you get out of that every single morning? And it's ironic that you look back onto 2007, into now, when we actually procured those funds, and some of the same people that are objecting to, "Why isn't it widened now?" Were the ones fighting against it then. So it's important that we put a plan together, and let's not, in the opinion, in my opinion, and what the residents initially brought to the table, let's not push this into litigation if we can't, and take that money which we would have spent, and what is it going to cost? We had an estimate of $1.8 million. So if we have $800,000 going into widening, we've got $450,000 of potential transportation impact fees, we're getting close. And in latest discussions that we had just yesterday, which was some of the residents had gotten together again with Mr. Steelman, we got even closer. So when you start talking about traffic, and I want to address that one thing, widening Park West Boulevard is not going to do it. Okay? Putting a roundabout at Bessemer, all that's going to do is put the queuing from 41 all the way back, because you get a roundabout quicker and you can stay in that line. There's no place to go onto 41. And we do hear that, and I know the mayor's taken a leadership role in that, and already started to looking, and this council has, put funds towards that, not waiting for DOT in 2019 to put that in place, put it in place now. Because if you can't get out of Bessemer, no matter how many queuing lanes, you can't pull onto 41. So it's useless to have that there. Useless to have it without that extension. So it all works together. There's communication that needs to happen, and I've mentioned this to Mr. Garch, to head up and talk with the schools about different times, an additional lane perhaps, so the queuing into the school, utilizing our parks. So there needs to be more negotiation. I think that yesterday, in the conversation that Mr. Wilks, Joe, and a couple others that were there, and there were members of the Alliance that were in there, encouraged more, and Madam Mayor, and I would agree that we need to have, we're so close, reducing something, moving, taking away, I think the misnomer that the 2006 plan was the end-all, but if I'm not mistaken, the traffic impact assessment was either 2002 or 2006, with the amount of commercial, was, I think it was 250,000 square feet, or some number, whatever it was, but it was 11,000. And so that's where it's confusing. It's because a gentleman was up there, I think it was from Dunes West, said that, "Well, it's going to decrease." Yes, from that plan of 11,000 trips to 3,000, it does decrease it, but it still adds 3,000 cars to a road that can't handle what they have now. So we have to come back to the table. We cannot let the developer, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Steelman's a great guy, just met him three months ago, we cannot let him continue to go, when I turned a corner one day, and there's Bessemer Road, and I will call it strip mining, it's kind of derogatory, the trees were politely removed, and the homes were placed there, and I threw a big red flag up, and I'm like, "What the heck happened? I don't remember that in the last council meeting." But we can't allow that to continue to happen, so there needs to be negotiation. And it needs to, that next step, and continue. I've reached out, and I know that there's a few people, the homeowners association, I think it was a gentleman said that he is, that you have put your name in as the nine that are going to represent the elected people inside of Park West, of the 30 or 31 homeowners association presidents, that'll have that block of nine. So I would encourage that conversation to start whenever that board is formed, and continue to work day and night, until the absolute plan that's acceptable by the residents can be brought up. And if not, well then, we as your councilmen will sit and defend your rights, and make sure that, as right now, the number one community in all of Mount Pleasant is what? Sorry if you don't live there, Park West. Okay? And to maintain that. We can make this the icing on the cake for a great community, or this could be a disaster waiting to happen for the future traffic that we can't handle. We have one chance to do it right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glasson. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Councilman Glasson, that was a lot of words.
Sorry about that.
We have heard from our citizens, we've had advice from legal counsel, we've had plenty of time to do our homework. I call the question.
Thank you very much, and just to refresh everyone's memory, we had a motion from Mr. Nichols earlier to deny, and we have a second from Mr. Garch, I believe.
Yep.
So there was a motion and a second on the floor for denial of the amendment to the Dunes West Development District ordinance known as Cambridge Square. Call for the vote, please. Would you roll call? Yes, did you have another comment?
No, I was going to ask, we call the roll, thank you. And just to make sure we understand, if you vote aye, that is actually in support of the denial.
Yes, a yes vote, correct.
Let's be clear.
A yes vote denies.
I don't know what that is.
Only in politics.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Glasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Aye. And the ice carry.
Although we do appreciate your encouragement and applause, we have much work to do here tonight, so thank you.
May I ask for a point of clarification from the town attorney? Do we even address the aye in light of that vote?
The impact assessment is contingent on deserving approval, so it's valid, but I think in the past-
Yeah, the particular impact assessment submitted and conceptual plan cannot be accomplished without this zoning.
So for point of order?
Point of order, legal always, that we address an item on the agenda, but as a practical matter, it's irrelevant, so.
So we still need to vote?
Legal would be more comfortable if we voted no, although it requires-
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second for denial, any further discussion or comments or questions? All in favor of denial of the impact assessment?
Aye.
Aye. And in favor of the impact assessment? The impact assessment fails, for clarity. Thank you. Just take a five-minute break. Thank you. Calling all council members, legal. Missing a, yeah, we've got a parliamentarian. Missing a town administrator. Okay, absolutely. Yes, we understand, from Mr. Glasson. Sir, if you see any of my council outside, could you ask them to step inside? Thank you. It might mean more coming from him. Mr. Smith, it's nice to see you tonight.
Bye, Greg, we'll talk to you.
Mayor Page, I know a lot of people left, but we may have left their phones, because probably not anybody here is still here. Oh, well, they'll figure it out.
Is it a version six?
Okay. The parliamentarian suggested we have a small auction while we're waiting on the rest of the panel. Yes, we understand, we understand. Anyway, thanks to all that you have stayed, we do have to wait for the town administrator, and we also have to wait for Mr. Glasson, we need some clarification on an issue.
I don't know where he went, he wasn't in the bathroom.
Uh-huh, we'll have to wait for him, though.
He's talking to the press.
But again, what a wonderful evening, we had the lacrosse team here, and we had the track team as well, and all, the Pro Start was a wonderful competition for local Wando kids. So as soon as Mr. Glasson gets in, we will start the meeting again. Well, we need clarification before we move on, so we have a point of order to-
Can I go find him?
No, sir, he'll come. He's not lost.
It's a matter of opinion.
She stopped, actually. Like in boxing, you're going to have to go to the cards, you're going to have to go-
Yeah, I'll be glad to, no interpretation.
Pat, that was me honking at you earlier.
Go get him, Pat.
Yeah, I was just waiting.
I will say, while we have a few minutes, I'd like to ask, Chief, we had some winnings, we had some acting skills that were won in your department, for the, wasn't it police department that did the-
The Mrs. Viles, the Seiya, Focus, and House, yes. Martiza, I don't exactly know the name of the award, but we did, Hermes, I might have won it.
The Hermes, Hermes award, believe it was.
Yes, it was the TSA that stood together through our office here, that was actually paid in movie theater during the Veterans Awareness Month, we did take, we won the award first place.
So not only is our fine council actors, but we have actors within the department, and we have one here that sits with us, our clerk of council participated in one of those videos. Yes. We are waiting for some clarification, we can't move forward until we get a point of order on the last. David, can we move forward and get clarification, come back for clarification?
There was an issue, just so everyone's aware, there was a comment made during the break that I think it was recorded as unanimous vote on the impact assessment, and I think there's a question for one or two council members as to whether they voted for the denial or not. So I would suggest we move forward, we can come back to that issue.
Thank you. We will clarify the record later, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, item number five, this is first reading of an ordinance to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District pertaining to Dunes West Parcel 1.
Yes, this piece of property, if you can, now, for me, this piece of property is located on Highway 41. The request is to amend the Dunes West Plan Development Ordinance, the bubble map that I think everybody's familiar with, shows this piece of property as R1. The request is to rezone it for commercial. This is just a little bit over six acres, it is recommended for commercial on the comprehensive plan. Dunes West does have enough commercial acreage left to accommodate this, they will pretty much be out of it, if this is approved, they won't have any commercial acreage left.
I have a motion, a second for first reading, I do have a speaker signed up.
DJ Slowick?
My name is DJ Slowick, I live at 3339 Linder Lane, in the smaller subdivision of Mount, of Planters Point, on Highway 41, which is on this side of Highway 41. I'd like to say that I would like you to reject this, or deny it, or delay it, because you haven't seen the full impact study of the Lowe's Grocery Store and the gas station that the council approved before, on another meeting. And I don't know who came up with the idea that just because a BP gas station has been removed, that we need another one. It's not warranted. Here's the Cambridge flyer, and we need to look outside these communities of Park West and Dunes West and see what other communities are being pressured. This is the Cambridge, this is Wando Village, right across the foot of the bridge that's being built. This is the Beach Company, it's coming. You're going to attract all those people to this side. A lot of people want to come to Mount Pleasant, it's a beautiful place. But I would just like to say that, you know, that's a 55 mile an hour road right through there. And I know that when I come out of my community in the morning, I'm dead stopped, because of Park West, Dunes West, and all the other communities that service and use Highway 41. And I would like for you to either reject this for now, delay it, and let's look at the impact of the Lowe's Grocery Store, and I would like to come back and say that we don't need a gas station within 680 feet of a community pool clubhouse in three major residential communities right there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second for approval, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 15040, in orders to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District Ordinance pertaining to a portion thereof known as Dunes West Parcel 1.
Item number six is a first, before we move on to number six, Mr. Glasson, we need some clarification, Mr. Penning?
Right. Item number four, the impact-
No, so that's not the clarification we need, sir.
The impact assessment, the clerk of council has it as all nine, voting for denial of the impact assessment, is that correct?
I voted for denial of the impact assessment, conceptual plan.
I did not.
You voted for approval, yes, okay, so it's eight to one, is that correct?
Okay, so we have it on the record now for clarification. Thank you. Six is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone a piece of property from R1 to R2. This property is located at 1351 Fairmont Avenue.
Yes, the property is shown up on the screen, it's showing up on the screen, highlighted in the turquoise here, the property is currently R1, it is requested to rezone to R2. The comprehensive plan, landage recommendation is low density, so that supports either R1 or R2. The intent is to subdivide, so that that is known and is clear, and so, and this could be accomplished if the property is subdivided along Ferry, that two lots could be accomplished. It also, worth noting, if the property is rezoned to R2, then the provisions of the special R2 overlay district would also apply, which does allow for a reduced front yard setback, the reduction is from 25 feet to 15 feet. I can certainly review the surrounding maps, it is, I mean, excuse me, surrounding properties, it is, the colors are very similar to one another, but just to make sure that everyone knows, this here, this area here is all R1, that sits in between Bellevue and Fairmont, and then the surrounding are R2, so Atlantic Avenue.
I have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two noes.
First reading, ordinance number 15041, Mayor Page, Mr. Carrier. An ordinance to rezone from R1, low-density residential district to R2, low-density residential district property located at 1351 Fairmont Avenue.
And item number seven, finally, this is an ordinance to amend subparagraph 1 of our section 156.31, to change the submittal timeframes for the development agreements.
Move for a second.
I have a motion, and many that are eager to get a second, any further discussion? And just for clarification, can you tell us what this will allow you as far as time, it doubles?
It'll double the timeframe, so if a request to amend a development agreement comes in rather than the normal 28 days prior to the meeting, it will be 56 days.
So it certainly allows staff more time to review these submittals as they come in.
So it would apply, if a development agreement amendment is submitted in conjunction with a PD amendment, it would apply to the PD request as well.
Thank you very much. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry.
First reading, ordinance number 15042, in orders to amend subparagraph 1 of paragraph B of section 156.031, chapter 156, and section 157.045 of chapter 157 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances pertaining to submittal timeframes for development agreements.
Thank you. Moving on to all business, items number one and two, I believe, are both related to the tract that is known behind Primus Drive, 8.5 acre.
I was wanting to do a little bit, I have seen the number of conditions that apply on number two.
Thank you. I have a motion with suggestions that the amendments are taking place in a second, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 15029, in orders providing the annexation of approximately eight and a half acre parcel of land located near determinants of Primus Drive, identified by TMS number 57800004, and known as Track 14, as depicted on an 1873 plat, recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in book B, page 46. Final reading, ordinance number 15030, in orders to rezone a private right-of-way known as Primus Drive, and nine tracts of land located adjacent thereto, from CC, Community Conservation District, to PDCD, Plan Development Conservation Design District, and zone an additional budding parcel to PDCD, Plan Development Conservation Design District, all collectively known as the Primus Track.
Thank you. Item number three, under final reading, is an ordinance to amend the regime on Longpoint Commerce Central to allow a K through 12 school as an additional permitted use.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We have to call the vote, please.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neal?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neal votes yes. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
No.
Stokes Marshall votes no. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
It passes. It passes.
Final reading, ordinance number 15031, in orders to amend ordinance 14034 pertaining to the Long Point Commerce Center Horizontal Property Regime PD, Plan Development District, providing for a K through 12 school and related uses as additional permitted uses on a portion therein.
Item number four and five are an ordinance for, that's an annexation and a rezoning in Pepper Plantation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is that for both items?
Thank you, yes.
I have a motion and a second for both items, number four and five. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No.
Final reading, ordinance number 15032, in orders providing the annexation of approximately four acre parcel of land known as Lot 11, located on Old Rosebud Trail, Pepper Plantation, identified by TMS number 615000146, and depicted on a plat recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in book EH, page 842. Final reading, ordinance number 15033, in orders to zone PDC, Plan Development Conservation Design District, an approximately four acre parcel of land known as Lot 11, Pepper Plantation.
Six is a final reading for.
Move for a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this property? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 15034, in orders to rezone from Mile One Low Density Residential District to AB, Area Wide Business District, and UCOD, Urban Corridor Overlay District, property known as Ryan Bennett Center Horizontal Property Regime, located at 1311, 1321 Chuck Dolly Boulevard.
Item number seven is the final reading for the properties on Annie Laurel Lane. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 15035, in orders to amend the 2009 through 2019 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map by changing the land use designation from Community Conservation to Medium Density Neighborhood for parcels of land comprising approximately 2.96 acres located on Annie Laurel Lane and Gulf Drive.
Thank you. Committee reports accommodations tax.
No meeting, no report.
Bids and purchases, committee. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Report and action item, please, of Mayor Kelsco. Two items for action, please. Item number one, the award of construction contract Gulf Stream for Act 526 on ramp contingent upon approval of additional project funding by council. Committee authorized a contract for construction of I Act 526 on ramp at Long Point Road in the amount of $734,271.37 to Gulf Stream Construction Company contingent upon council increasing the budget funds by $245,000 to $975,000, up from the original project budget of $730,000. Additional funding to come from transportation infrastructure reserves. As such, I places this motion to council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for this much needed project. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it. Let's get that ramp built.
Item number two, Madam Mayor, award of construction contract for construction of five drainage systems for existing ball fields at Park West and Patriots Point, contingent upon approval of additional funding by council. Committee authorized a contract with Carolina Green Corporation to construct five ball field drainage systems at Park West and at Patriots Point ball fields, contingent upon approval of additional $15,685 in funding to come from the accommodation tax funds. The additional funds to the project will allow the project to install two more drainage systems than originally planned. As such, I place this in the form of a motion to council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
What are these kind of systems called?
These systems are called drainings. Drainage system.
Camber.
I guess we're all feeling a little froggy at this point in the evening, I apologize. But we do have a motion and a second for this much needed addition to our fields, which will allow our kids more playtime as well as our adults. All in favor? And the ayes have it.
Madam Mayor, report only the committee authorized contract to construct the Newtown Hall to McKnight Construction Company in the amount of $21,403,488. Project will take two years to complete and will house the majority of town's government. This concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. $21 million Newtown Hall, let's get that one started, too. Thank you very much. ED, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have an action item, item number one, recommendation to approve the economic development incentive package for value added business project. The committee met to discuss the project for the impact fee relief for the value added business Hubner Manufacturing and expanding for the fourth time at their headquarters here in Mount Pleasant. We're delighted to keep them here in town, Madam Mayor. Expansion will add more than 55,000 square feet and expected to be completed at the end of this calendar year. Move council through the economic development incentive package of $64,000, 64,375 for Hubner Manufacturing.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Glad to keep them here as well. All in favor? Aye. And the ayes have it.
Two quick other reports. The committee discussed in this the necessity of having a point person to implement the economic development strategy and agreed to have an economic development director hired within 90 days. The committee also discussed the monetary commitment to the Charleston Chamber of Commerce and the town's membership benefits. More than special will come posted to the membership renewal period, and after the economic development director is hired, it can help participate in those discussions. And one other item, Madam Mayor, under economic development, Mount Pleasant, we'd like to congratulate our governor and Secretary of Commerce Bobby Hitt and all the colleagues with, over in Berkeley County, on their achievement bringing Volvo here to the Low Country. The tri-county area is a major player for local, national, international economic development, and we're delighted and we send a huge congratulations to everyone in Berkeley County. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mark, for those kudos. Education, Mr. Garch.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we did not meet, but I'd like to pass on, based on my interaction with our two school board representatives, our senior staff, CCLT, both the brand new Jenny Moore and brand new Lang on the Hammond Road site will be ready in August for the students to move into, so they will take online. Also, on the redistricting of students, it is estimated that just under 500 students will be removed from Royal Hill and Paintney and Cario into Park West schools to go to other schools, starting in August.
Appreciate that update. Finance Committee?
Madam Mayor, we did not meet. Such, I have no report.
Fire?
Madam Mayor, just quickly, we had 10 fires, 438 medical assists, and 202 other for a total of 650 calls, and that's my report.
Thank you. Human Resources?
Human Resources did not meet, therefore there is no report.
Patriots Point Development Authority, we did meet. There is continued discussion of the Medal of Honor Museum and the movement of the road required for that, and if there's anything new. We're also continuing to work on the leases. We have not gotten before the State Budget Control Board to get those approved. That's all I have. Planning Committee?
Madam Mayor, we met, but all of the action items that we cover in the planning committee have already been addressed by this council this evening.
Wonderful.
Good for them.
Okay, thank you. Police, legal, and judicial, this is my committee. We had consideration of an ordinance concerning volunteer boards and commissions in public office. I brought this to the committee for discussion. I had received several questions from citizens. I thought it was something that needed to be addressed. If people were questioning how we do business, I certainly want to get it out in the open and discuss it. It's completely up to the council how we move on. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I move for denial of consideration of ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for denial. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, it's not, oh, that's for the action. You know, thank you for keeping me on track. The report, do you have a report, sir?
Police, legal, judicial?
Yeah, we have a thing.
I think you said it, Mayor. We also recognize a couple of police department employees who may use the service.
Thank you very much. Public Services Committee?
Yes, ma'am, we'll get you when we.
We'll get you when we have it under new business. Public Services?
Madam Mayor, continued outstanding job during the recent rains, kept many of the fields playing, and I just want to commend Jody and his staff that are always on top of it and always the unsung hero.
Thank you.
But we did not meet and have no report.
Recreation?
Rec did not meet mayor and council, but we do have some interesting tidbits. We gave 1,167 swim lessons in April. Our senior center membership is over 2,700 now, and our tennis center membership is over 1,000. All pretty good milestones.
Wow, thank you very much for that, Mr. Carrier. Lots of recreation and recreation needs here in the town of Mount Pleasant. Transportation? Eric?
Happy to, yes, ma'am. Couple items, the committee did review the traffic impact study process, and also there's an action item under M1 to add peaceful way to the sales tax program.
Paul, thank you for leading on that. Do we need a motion at this time?
Motion approved.
No, I said, no, it's now.
Motion approved. We add peaceful ways in Charleston, Kentucky, sale tax, any projects efficient.
Second.
And I have a second. And again, Paul, thank you very much for taking the lead on this. We have 100% of people on that street that now want to have it paved, and we're going to get it done. Thank you for your work. All in favor? Aye. And the ayes have it. Let's get that road paved with the county. Water Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Report only. Commissioners continue to be focused on the upcoming annual meeting, which will adopt the fiscal year 2016 operating budget and 1516 capital expenditure budget. Commissioners are holding a public hearing on Monday, June 5th at 5:30 to present proposed changes. At this time, commissioners are considering and following with the budget. May I just go through these very quickly? No volumetric rate increases. Change in basic service, in basic facility charge per REU, residential equivalent unit. Water basic facility charge from $6 to $8. Water basic facility charge from $12 to $14. Change in impact fees, index to keep up with construction costs at 3.5% per year. Adjustments to ancillary fees, full list is available on the website. These changes are scheduled to take effect with all bills after June 30th, 2015. Proposed budget is follows, operating expenditures budget fiscal year 2015, this is a revised number that you've heard from before, $26,277,466 fiscal year 2016, $29,205,744, and that includes $7,396,381 in debt services. Finally, capital expenditure budget, mayor and council, $47,375,789, which is a two-year appropriation fiscal year 15 and 16. Again, the annual meeting is going to be Monday, June 29th at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mark, thank you so much for your hard work at Water Works, and I do encourage our citizens to go over and attend a Water Works meeting. They're very enlightening. Do you have anything for water supply?
It's lonely over there. We have no water supply committee reports.
Administrator's report. Mr. Demore?
Thank you, Mayor. Announcing four opportunities to serve, one seat available on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, two on Design Review Board, one on the Construction Board of Adjustments, and another on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Madam Mayor, a comment about our boards and commissions. Regardless of the other stuff, we have, in my view, an unbelievable wealth of talent of close to 77,000, 78,000 residents, and somehow, I feel like we're not, either we're not doing a good job of getting the word out, or we're using the wrong avenue, or we're not publicizing well enough what these important boards and commissions do. I mean, we spent it, the design review, I'll just take that as an example, we spent a good time last year reconstituting the citizens' design review board, and I'm hoping that we get a number of great applications there, BOZA, these other places, and I'm just, I'm hopeful that the folks who are still here, three and a half hours, whatever we are, I don't even know anymore, two and a half hours into this, that you tell your friends and neighbors, it's not a sentence, it's a privilege and it's an honor to serve on these boards and commissions, and they make public service matters and they make a difference. Please get them to turn in some applications. Thank you for letting me have that speech.
Thank you. Council New Business, under New Be, excuse me, I'm completely speechless for the first time in a long time, how about that? Under Council New Business, number A, we have the action item, which is the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 36.23, chapter 36, which is the filing statement of candidacy. I believe earlier we already had a motion and a second. Can we reiterate who those were?
Move for denial.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a denial. Is there any discussion among councils? I have someone signed up to speak. Ms. Sullivan?
Ms. Sullivan.
You know the routine, please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes to address to council.
Get all my blocks out. Okay, Pat Sullivan, 1002 Plantation Court. We have four seats that are going to come up for election this November. One person has already said she's not running, and that leaves three to go. The issue now is whether people who are volunteering their time on boards and commissions, if they announce their candidacy, can they continue to serve? And I think it would be to the detriment of the public to not be able to continue to hear what these people say in the BOZA meetings, the planning commission, and et cetera. It's totally different, and you all can see as what happened tonight. All of you all can talk as long as you want on anything that you want that's on this whole agenda. And the public, so the public has a chance to see, hear what your views are. On the planning commission, for example, those people have one time per month, and now it's a little more frequent because of the smart growth issue. But that is a vast difference between hearing that person up here speaking and voting compared to going through all of the minutes of, say, planning commission meetings, which is quite onerous to figure out what this person has said. And so I think it's, it really puts the public in particular at a disadvantage because this was a full room, and they heard what all of y'all said for almost over three hour, oh, two and a half hours. So please, don't, don't make this happen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. Any further discussion?
I don't like to call the question.
All in favor? Aye. And opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number two under New Business is the adoption of a resolution making the declaration of intent pursuant to the United States Treasury Department Internal Revenue Service Regulation.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye and opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number three under New Business is the adoption of a resolution opposing seismic testing for offshore oil exploration activities.
Move to adopt resolution.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any further discussion?
And Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Madam Mayor, I signed up.
Thank you. Let me have the council first, please.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself because I represent some of the interest in, in the shipping industry that will be involved in that, so I have to recuse myself.
Thank you for clarification, Mr. Santos. Any further discussion among council? And I have two signed up. Mr. Bagwell?
Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Bagwell. I live at two-oh-seven William Street. I'm here to represent the Safe Sham Creek Board of Directors, and we have voted to support Mr. Nichols' motion to go on record as opposing offshore drilling and testing. We think that this is something that we don't need in the Low Country. I think that the town of Mount Pleasant needs to join our, our citizens and our, and our local municipalities that have voted against this, and I think even when you see City of Columbia voting against it, I think that that sends a real message. I think that it would be, this is probably one of the most critical issues that this state has faced in quite some time. Our coast is a gem, it's a jewel. We do not need this kind of development in, in the state of South Carolina. As Mr. Smith pointed out, Volvo's coming. We are doing an excellent job of recruiting outstanding industries to this part of the world. Our citizens are being trained at Trine Tech to take on these high-paying, great jobs that are coming. I don't think that we need the type of infrastructure that is required to support offshore drilling and all the things that go along with it. And God forbid, if we do this, we should ever have the kind of disaster they had in the Gulf of Mexico. I know everybody says the technology has improved. I don't think the technology has improved to the point where we ought to take this risk. So I urge you to support this resolution, and I hope that the town of Mount Pleasant will join all the other local municipalities and coastal municipalities, plus Charleston County government that have voted to go on record as opposing this. Thank you very much.
I just want to announce, Mr. Sidwell? I don't see Mr. Sidwell here any longer.
I believe Mr. Sidwell left.
He's drinking. I'm sure he's.
Yes, sir, I recognize. Yes, Mr. Nichols?
I'm sorry. On this resolution, I do want to say a couple of comments. I want to thank certain people for helping me get up to speed personally. So I want to tell you that sixty days ago, I actually, I knew what offshore drilling was, but I didn't know very much about it. You know, I knew what images I'd seen from the disaster. I knew that it, it's an important part of the economy in other places. But it took some time for me personally to get up to speed. I want to thank the folks who literally helped me out here.[1708.34]